Good evening, Vice Chair McGee. Can you hear us?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Yes, I have you guys. How about me?
Yes. Good evening. This meeting of the Suffolk City Public School Board for April 24th, 2025 is now called to order. At this time, Board Member Brittingham is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence. Thank you. Board Member Sling Love will read our mission.
The mission of Suffolk Public Schools is to produce 21st century learners that will become productive citizens in society, foster a dynamic, safe, and nurturing learning environment, partner with school community for the benefit of students and staff, strengthen the school division by employing a highly qualified and diverse staff, effectively and efficiently manage capital and human resources, effectively communicate to increase community investment.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda with the addition of the resolution to suspend our School Board Policy Section 1.5.1: colon 2 entitled "Education Equity Defined: Guiding Questions, Equity Goals, Equity Measurements, Key Terms." And to number 2, move two citizen speakers to the Agenda topic portion of the citizen comments from the non-Agenda portion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Board Member Sling Love and duly seconded by Board Member Brittingham and Vice Chair McGee. Is there any discussion? There being none, we are ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Sling Love?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I will yield the floor to Dr. Gordon now so we can begin our presentation of honor graduates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call to the podium the proud principal of Nanceman River High School, Dr. Sean Green. I know he's going to be assisted by other members of his administrative team. I did see Mr. Stevie Green is here. We also have the lead school counselor, Ms. Kim Reed, to introduce, I believe he said, 204, if they're here, honor graduates from Nanceman River High School. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon, and good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Sean Green, proud principal of Nanceman River High School. As Dr. Gordon stated earlier, we have with us Mr. Stevie Green, Dean of Students, Ms. Kimberly Reed, Councilor and Director. We also have two of our school counselors, Ms. Shawanda Darden, School Counselor, and Ms. Caitlin Craft, School Counselor. We're honored to present to you our honor graduates for the class of 2025. Remarkably enough, over half of our graduating class have met the criteria. They have did everything, put in all of the hard work to receive that distinguishment of being an honor graduate, and we are extremely proud of all of their hard work. This group holds a special place in my heart because a lot of them have been my students since 6th and 7th grade. So I've been their principal for a while, so I'm really excited about graduation. I'm really excited for the future of this group. So at this time, I'll ask Ms. Reed if you would come forth and share more information. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gordon, Chairperson Howell, Vice Chair McGee, School Board members, and all assembled. I am Kimberly Reed, the School Councilor and Director at THE Nanceman River High School. It is my pleasure to introduce you to the honor graduates from the class of 2025. We have a total of 204 honor graduates this year. These students have worked tirelessly to earn this academic achievement in addition to their athletics, clubs, and community service activities. Our students have received over 430 college acceptance letters on file, and let's not mention the over $4.5 million we've received in scholarships thus far. Please know that our offerings, our numbers grow daily. I'd like to mention that today, several students are absent due to various athletic activities and other obligations. While we understand the importance of academics, we also encourage our students to pursue their passions and commitments outside of the classroom, and we do appreciate your understanding. Thank you for allowing our school to set the precedence for the district. Please welcome the Nanceman River High School Class of 2025 Honor Graduates.
How y'all doing? I'm Melvin Brown. I'm here with my mom, Latanya Stewart. I'll be attending West Virginia Wesleyan to study exercise science.
If I could interrupt for a second, parents, when your student calls your name, please stand so we can celebrate you and your efforts as well.
Good afternoon. I'm Trey Burr. I'm the daughter of Tyra Burr and Dr. Sinette Burr III. I'm going to Xavier University of Louisiana on a full-ride scholarship for academic and cheerleading. As well, my brother, he couldn't make it, but his name is Sinette Burr III, and he'll be going to Norfolk State also on a full-ride.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janasia Clemens. I will be attending Virginia State on elementary education. My parents are Gerard Clemens and Donisha Clemens in the back, and thank you, guys.
I'm Jada Copeland. My parents are April and Craig Skinner. I plan to go to Shria University for business administration.
I'm David Davenport. I'm the son of Darius and Maria Davenport. I will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T on a full-ride for biological engineering.
Good evening. My name is Natalia DeFradis, and after serving a mission for my church, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, for 18 months, I will be attending TCC to major in sonography.
Hi, I'm Gary Dennis. My parents are Javon and Brittany Callier. I'll be going to Virginia Commonwealth University for political science and a double major in fashion, and I aspire to be a diplomat.
Hi, I'm Imani Drake. My parents are Tia and Cornelius Drake, and I'm going to TCC for radiology.
Hi, I'm Allison Jane Sanchez Evangelista. My parents are Mark and Jane Evangelista, and I will be attending Old Dominion University to get my nursing degree.
Hi, I'm Hannah Fleming. My parents are April and Ryan Fleming, and I will be attending Christopher Newport University to major in forensic science.
Hi, my name is Taylor Gahl. I'm the daughter of Megan and Christopher Gahl. I plan to attend Virginia Military Institute in the fall with a major in biology and a minor in psychology, to which I will commission to the U.S. Air Force right after.
Hi, my name is Owen Hansford. My parents are Nicholas and Stacy Hansford. I'll be going to the Air Force to study atmospheric science and pursue a career in meteorology.
Hello, my name is Michaela Ingram. My parent is Maria Simmons, and I'll be attending ODU to major in exercise science.
Hi, my name is Israel Lewis. My parents are Roger and Linda Lewis, and I'll be attending Virginia Commonwealth University to major in business communication systems.
Hi, my name is Jada Jennings. My parents are Ebony and Eric Jennings, and I'll be attending Virginia Commonwealth University to study radiation sciences.
Hello, my name is Michaela Miller. My parents are OJ and Katie Miller. I am going to Hampton University to major in pre-med biology, and I aspire to be a pediatric general surgeon.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Nguyen. My parents are Vu Nguyen and Chi Nguyen, and I'm attending the University of Virginia for psychiatry on the pre-med track.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Peterson. My parents are Jessica and Maurice Compton, and I will be attending Virginia Commonwealth University majoring in biology.
Hi, my name is Kiana Reddick. My parents are Tamika Scott and Keon Reddick. I will be attending Old Dominion University, majoring in nursing anesthesia.
Hi, my name is Coria Riley. My parents are Karen and Trent Riley, and I'm going to Norfolk State University to study kinesiotherapy.
Hi, my name is Morgan Ricks. My parents are Jerome Ricks and Shelley Tucker, and I'm going to Virginia State University to major in psychology.
Hi, I'm Aria Ricks. My parents are Dr. Lamont Ricks and Tracy Ricks. I'll be going to Norfolk State on a full-ride to study biology, and then I'll be going to medical school to be a cosmetic dermatologist.
Hello, my name is Authentic Smallwood. My parents are Naquan Smallwood and Juanita Holland. I will be attending a four-year university to major in engineering.
Hi, my name is Jayden Stewart. I'll be attending Virginia Commonwealth University to major in fashion design, and my future career is to be a fashion designer and a model.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Trujillo. My parents are Victor and Rita Trujillo, and I'll be going to Rhode Island University, majoring in dietetics.
Hi, my name is Demetrius Warren, the parent of Dresse Warren, and I'll be attending Virginia Commonwealth University and majoring in electrical engineering.
How y'all doing? My name is Kumari Watson. I'm here with my parents, Robert and Olivia Bush, and I will be attending Old Dominion University to major in psychology.
Hi, my name is Cicely Wilson. My parents are Steven and Cherie Wilson, and I plan on attending James Madison University to major in secondary education.
Hi, my name is Josephine Woodard. My parents are Heather Woodard and Rudy Woodard, and I'll be attending James Madison University to major in justice studies.
Hello, my name is Adrian Winder. My parents are Tremaine and Danae Campbell, and I'll be attending Old Dominion University studying preclinical studies, and I aspire to be a pediatric anesthesiologist.
My name is Aubrey Winder. My parents are also Tremaine and Danae Campbell, and I plan on attending Norfolk State University for pre-nursing to become a pediatric nurse.
My name is Blair Young. My parents are Stephanie and Blair Young Sr. I will be attending Virginia Military Institute as a history major and commissioned to the United States Marine Corps.
So as shared by our students, our future is bright, and we look to celebrate May 31st. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. If Luke's parents are still here, Mr. and Mrs. Boynton, if you're here, could you stand so we could recognize you, because I missed... There you are. Congratulations, all the graduates. At this time, I'll allow my colleagues to just share some of their thoughts with the graduates and the parents before we conclude this part of the presentation. I'd like to start to my left with Board Member Jenkins. I think she has just about the most experience in celebrating with you, so I'm going to start over here. Board Member Jenkins, we're going to move around.
Hello, everybody. This is one of the most exciting times for me as a school board member to see what our district and what our teachers and the parents... Because number one, we wouldn't be here without the parents, because you produce the children. So I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done, the moms, dads, the aunts, the grandmas, the grandfathers, and all of that, because it was a village that got us to this part, to this place right here. So thank you so much. And to our students, 204? Oh, my God. That is a lot. 204. So they may say that we, you know, our kids are not doing well. Well, they must not know about Suffolk, because we are doing well. We are doing well. I'm so proud of you. So everything that you've done to get to this point, keep doing it and add more to it. And I just want you to know that because you're leaving Nanceman River, you're leaving Suffolk Public Schools, don't leave us. We're still here for you whenever you need us. Just call us. Call Dr. Gordon. He'll get in contact with us. Our numbers, our names, everything is on our website. Call us as individual school board members. We want to support you all the way through, okay? So again, thank you so much, and all the doctors and everybody. I'm looking forward to it, because when I get sick, I'm coming to you. So thank you so much. I'm proud of you.
Board Member Fields, are you prepared?
I'd like to say to, as a retired teacher, I'd like to say to the students, you have knocked it out the park. This is a chapter that's closing, but what's opening for you is boundless. It's boundless. You all have demonstrated that you can do it, that you have the skills, you have the abilities to achieve. Don't let it stop here. Keep going. Some of you have hidden talents that you're not sharing with us yet, and we're going to be keeping our eyes out to looking for those. To the parents and everybody who supported the students, thank you so much. This, to me, is a testament that Suffolk Public Schools is making a difference. 204 honor graduates, not just regular graduates, but honor graduates. That is a very high standard, and I couldn't be prouder to be in your presence and to speak to you and to hopefully speak encouragement into your spirits. I just encourage you to keep going, keep doing what you're doing, and show everybody how it's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Sling Love, we're going to circle back around.
Well, I just want to congratulate you all. You are an impressive group. Wow. Honestly, hearing you come up and hearing the different areas of study that you are going to take on and the places you're going is very, very exciting. I noticed that there's not too many overlaps in careers, so there should be a place for every single one of you to come back to Suffolk after you graduate in four years. I'm sure we will find plenty of jobs for all of you. So come back and bring all your wealth of knowledge, your wealth of experience, and everything that you learn, and make Suffolk a better place. We are so grateful for each one of you coming tonight, and congratulations. We look forward to celebrating with you on May 31st.
Can we take a moment and just celebrate all of the parents? Come on, let's give it up for our parents. I truly believe that it was what we saw tonight, the graduation, well, the declaration of 204 honor graduates with over $4.5 million in scholarship offers to date, with 430 college acceptances thus far. It speaks volumes to how our students, our parents, and our teachers, our educators, our principals all collaborated together to get this excellent product that we heard tonight. I'm super excited. Let's give it up for our students one more time. Come on, let's make some noise. Let's make some noise. You can do better than that. This is just the rehearsal for graduation. Want to get you ready. I'm super excited to see two very important people to me come across and mention their name. Mr. Melvin Brown, outstanding football player. Ms. Copeland, got to see you come across. I'm so excited. And especially for all of those young people who have stated that they're going to serve our country, I'm giving you a thank you in advance. Thank you so much for your willingness to continue to serve. And lastly, in closing, to all of those who will be entering residence in the land of Sparta, I just want to tell you, behold, the green and gold.
Well, I want to first start by just congratulating these students and for their completion of their...
their high school, and that it's culminating to this time in May. I know y'all have worked really, really hard in listening to all of the different schools and all of the different degrees and tracks that you're going on. I can tell that you are serious about your future. I want to take a moment to congratulate the families, mom, dad, aunts, uncles, grandparents. You are the ones that spent the last, you know, 13 years of their lives getting them to this point, so congratulations on your hard work as well. I'm really excited for the class of 2025, listening to what you've done, where you're going, the amount of college acceptances, the amount of money. Well done, and I resonate what Board Member Sling Luff said. You know, we look forward to seeing what the next four years brings for you, the experience that you'll gather, and we hope that you'll come back and see us often. Thank you.
Vice Chair McGee.
Hey, thank you. Hey, everyone, congratulations. Job well done. Keep pursuing excellence. This is just the beginning. The road might be tough, but don't give up. If you get knocked down, don't let it stop you right there. Get back up, keep fighting. Looking forward to hearing all the great things. Congrats to all the parents. Job well done, mom and dad. And again, to the grads, keep pursuing excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just speak to the parents for a minute. Gosh, that went fast, didn't it? And I mean, like, their childhood, not this presentation. My godson will be walking the stage this year, my son next year, my daughter the year after that, and I feel like I have a bit of whiplash, because it just snuck up on me. The days were long, but the years went by so quickly. So, to you, I ask you to celebrate this moment, shed some tears, because there's joy in it, and there's a little bit of nostalgia for what has been. Congratulations for the work you've done to walk with your students to reach this point. And to my fellow warriors, congratulations. 30 years ago, I was in your seat, and let me just say, never in a million years did I think I would be in this seat. So, keep the possibilities open. I heard we have a couple of potential teachers out there. The door is always open, as Board Member Jenkins said. Take these last few weeks that are left and soak it in, because before you know it, you will be in my shoes, and it will all just be a memory. Let it be a beautiful memory, a strong memory, and you are always home when you're in Suffolk. Thank you.
All right, we're going to pause for a few seconds to allow our honor graduates such opportunity and the families to leave before we resume the rest of our business meeting, that is, unless you want to stay here and hang with us as well.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. At this time, we will continue with the remainder of our business meeting. I will again yield the floor to Dr. Gordon for our reports by the superintendent. My bad, backing up a step. We moved our citizen speakers up in the agenda since they will now be speaking on topic. So, if they are here, I'm going to yield the floor to Mrs. Johnson to go over her statements and call the speakers forward. If, for some reason, they're not here yet because they didn't anticipate the meeting moving this quickly, we will still circle back to where they originally were on the agenda if they're not here yet.
It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board are conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so in the order in which they sign up to speak. That persons in attendance may observe and hear the proceedings of the board without distraction, and that the members of the board and the board employees are able to transact the business of the board with minimal disruption. Any person addressing the board shall confine their comments to matters germane to the services, policies, and affairs of the school board or Suffolk Public Schools, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of peace. Refrain from obscenities, vulgarity, or other breach of respect. Comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board, through the exercise of its discretion, decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment. Refrain from cumulative and repetitive remarks, and refrain from making any comments regarding any proceeding pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceedings. Persons must not engage in disorderly, disruptive, or bolsterous conduct, such as but not limited to making noise, using profane language, or obscene gestures, yelling, or similar demonstrations that disrupt, interrupt, or disrupt the peace and good order of the meeting. Persons addressing the board may deliver to the board or its clerk written material, including reports, statements, exhibits, letters, or signed petition, and may also make us any charts or graphs during their verbal presentation. The school board welcomes comments from the board as appropriate. Board members will listen to comments but will not comment, deliberate, or take action on them. The school board chair may direct the superintendent to investigate items and report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting. The chair or other presiding officers shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order, subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chair, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at tonight's board meeting. The officer shall, under the direction of the chair or other presiding officer, have charge of the meeting area, the waiting area, and corridors adjacent to, and shall prevent disorder or interruption or interruption of the business of the board. Our first speaker for the evening is Tanya Hughes, and her topic is the relevance of DEI.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Gordon, Madam School Board Chair, school board members, and all who are gathered here tonight. My name is Tanya Hughes. I'm the proud mother of two beautiful children, age 11 and 17 years old. My husband and I do everything we can to protect them, to guide them, and to ensure they receive an education that uplifts them, not one that diminishes their worth or their identity. Tonight, I speak not just for my children, but for every parent, grandparent, and guardian who sees what's happening and refuses to stay silent. The Virginia Department of Education has issued a directive. Suffolk Public Schools must sign a letter to end all diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts that are allegedly in violation of the Title VI or risk losing nearly $10 million in federal funding. This followed from a letter from the U.S. Department of Education that was sent on April 3rd. And yet, we, the public, are only just now hearing about this at the last hour. Why? Why wasn't our community brought into this conversation a lot earlier? Now, let's be clear. Simple justice demands public funds. Funds contributed by taxpayers of all races, colors, and national origins not be used in ways that encourage, sustain, or result in racial discrimination. And yet, here we are, being forced into a false choice. Uphold equity or preserve funding? That's not a choice. That's coercion. Let's not forget that Suffolk Public Schools recently entered into a consent order with the Department of Justice, an agreement approved by the U.S. District Courts, to finally complete the desegregation and achieve full unitary status, unitary status, excuse me. We've made progress, implemented a minority-to-majority program, and taken real steps forward, righting past wrongs. Now, it feels like we're being pulled backwards, back into a modern-day Jim Coera era, where inclusion is treated as a threat and silence is the price of survival. But we have to stop to think about what message are we sending to our children, especially our Black and Brown students, the ones in Title I schools who are already faced with more obstacles than many can even imagine. What do we say to them when we strip them away of the very efforts meant to support and empower them? What do we tell them when equity becomes controversial? Sometimes, we have to say enough is enough. Sometimes, we can't wait for the perfect moment. We have to get our hands dirty as well, stand up and do what's right, even when it is hard. So, I ask you, when is that moment going to come for Suffolk? Or will we keep taking the easy way out, hoping nobody notices? This is bigger than policy. It's about our people, our children, the souls of our schools, our public schools. So, board members, you may feel your hands are tied, but our voices aren't. Our resolve isn't. We are watching, and we are rising, because our children are watching us. I urge the school board with the community to join Norfolk Public Schools and others across the state and reject the dangerous rollbacks of the diversity, equity, and inclusion under President Trump's administration. This is not just about dollars. It's about dignity. It's about our children, and it's about the kind of Suffolk we choose to be. Let's show them what courage looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Johnson is our second speaker.
Our next speaker, Valerie Boykins, Suffolk Public Schools, DEI policy.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gordon, and all assembled, good evening. First, let me congratulate you on... or congratulate those honor graduates, and thank you so much for acknowledging them. I don't remember that when I graduated from Forest Glen, many, many moons ago. I am Valerie Boykins. I bring you greetings along with comments and concerns on behalf of the NAACP Suffolk-Nansman Branch, where I currently serve as the president. I also want to acknowledge the NAACP members who are here, the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha, Theta Phi Beta, and other organizations who will also stand in unity with us on this issue. We understand that Suffolk Public Schools has been asked to sign a letter that requires our school division to suspend all efforts to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion based on race within the school system. Today is a sad day for Suffolk, for the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States of America. It's a day where, unfortunately, miseducation, misinformation, and perhaps misguided priorities risk jeopardizing the civil rights and future opportunities of our young people. And also, our educators. We are yet encouraged by the injunction that was issued by the court today, which limits the administration's ability to restrict federal funds for Suffolk and other schools, at least for now. We imagine that this could be a long and arduous court battle. Why has DEI become such a bad phrase in our society? Perhaps we should start with a definition. The NAACP uses the following definition. "Divergent, equity, and inclusion are three closely linked values held by many organizations, institutions, entities, and education systems that are working to be supportive of different groups of individuals, including people with different races, ethnicities, religions, abilities, genders, and sexual orientations." Certainly, members of the board, each of you and those of us in this audience fit into one, two, or perhaps more of these categories. DEI initiatives seek to protect the rights of all. It's a win-win, but sadly, some think that it's about taking away from others. DEI, as we see it, is that diversity is embracing the differences everyone brings to the table while acknowledging the benefits of the multiple perspectives, ideas, solutions provided when individuals with different backgrounds, entities, and views collaborate and are heard. Equity is treating everyone fairly and providing opportunities for everyone to succeed, considering their traits, including resources, supports, and potential accommodations to help those with disabilities. Inclusion is creating an environment where people of all backgrounds can thrive and contribute their fullest potential, some even at a A for accessibility, which, again, enhances those with disabilities to make sure that DEI includes them in every aspect. The NAACP seeks to achieve a society in which DEI is protected while eradicating anti-Black racism in the economy, in education, in health, in justice, and in the environment. While maintaining the tenets of DEI is important to us, we also understand the potential impact of losing federal funds could have on our school division. We regret that the federal government has initiated such a mandate which somewhat holds you hostage, it holds us hostage. We have been... We have seen published figures of the potential loss of $9.6 million in the letter that was to be signed. We've also received information from the Virginia Education Association obtained by VDOE that cites an even higher rate, potential eight-figure potential loss to Suffolk Public Schools. VDOE indicates it could be as much as $18 million. That could cost us teachers, about 92 teachers or educators, over $2 million in meals for students who rely on that food daily. It could harm some of our most valuable students who rely on almost $3.5 million for Title I funding, which provides resources for disadvantaged students, and IDEA, students with disabilities. It could harm our career and technical education jobs, which could be at risk because of high-quality vocational and technical training opportunities missed, and a potential loss of at least $300,000 in career and technical.
Ms. Boykins, I apologize, your time is up.
Thank you very much for listening to me. As I cite those figures, I just want to remind you that you represent all of our students, and we want you to do the right thing behind... by our students regardless of what the law says and what mandates come your way.
Thank you for your time.
They deserve it. Thank you very much.
Now, we will have reports by the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call to the podium Ms. Anthonet Dickens, our Communications and Community Engagement Officer, to provide our good news report. We will discuss and highlight our elementary students at the Battle of the Books, the Little Feet Meet, our Champions Together Unified Track Meet, the Junior National Honor Society students at John Yates Middle School, the Lakeland High School Center for Performing and Production Arts, the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow Class at Nansman River, participating in the Educators Rising Conference, our 3Q SPS Star Achievers, our VSBA Business Honor Row to include Armadas, Barton Ford, and Star Motors. And I will close out, Madam Chair, for our calendar of special events. Ms. Dickens?
Thank you so much, Dr. Gordon. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and those here with us this evening. On Friday, March 28th, young readers from across the city of Suffolk gathered for the Ninth Annual Battle of the Books competition. This is a spirited literary showdown, if you will, that brings together students from public, private, and home schools to celebrate the power of reading. The event challenges student teams to read from a curated list of books... The event challenges student teams to read from a curated list of books and tests their knowledge in a fast-paced trivia-style contest. This year, students from six Suffolk Public Schools elementary campuses participated in the competition. Those schools were Booker T. Washington Elementary, Creekside Elementary, Florence Bowser Elementary, Macbin Jr. Elementary, Northern Shores Elementary, and Oakland Elementary. Congratulations are in order to all of the students who participated and showcased their dedication to not only reading but to teamwork. And a special shout-out goes to the Creekside Elementary Schools Team Book Divorce and Florence Bowser Elementary Schools Team Book Rats, both of whom placed in the top four in the competition. Suffolk Public Schools also extends a heartfelt thank you to the Suffolk Public Library for their continued partnership and support in organizing and hosting this event, this event annually. We appreciate their dedication to promoting literacy and creating enriching experiences for our students. Events like this not only highlight academic excellence but also foster a lifelong love of reading and literature amongst our students. Our Special Education Department proudly hosted our division's annual Little Feet Meet at Lakeland High School. This event is developed for elementary school special education program classes and is held in partnership with Special Olympics Virginia. It provides an inclusive and supportive environment where our youngest athletes can showcase their determination, teamwork, and resilience through a series of fun and engaging activities. The energy, smiles, and support we witness throughout the day truly does reflect the best of what our school division has to offer. We thank all of our community partners, staff, and volunteers who made this event possible. Their continued support and commitment help us to create unforgettable experiences for our students and remind them that their achievements do matter and are worth celebrating. We also proudly hosted another inspiring event, Champions Together Unified Track and Field Meet, bringing together high school students in special education and their general education peers for a day filled with sportsmanship, unity, and fun. This is another one of our annual events that exemplify the spirit of inclusion as students compete side by side. Champions Together isn't just about athletics but helps our students build a culture of respect and acceptance, where every student is recognized for their individual abilities and contributions. We also thank all of our students, families, staff, and community members who came out to this event to help make it powerful and meaningful. For both our Little Feet Meet and Champions Together event, we would also like to extend a special thank you to Dr. Cassandra McNair, our Director of Special Education, and Mr. James Gunther for their dedicated sped team, excuse me, and their dedicated sped team for their tireless efforts in growing the Special Olympics movement within Suffolk Public Schools and helping to extend opportunities for athletic programs to every student. Members of the National Junior Honor Society at, excuse me, at John Yates Middle School recently led a community service initiative by collecting food, pet supplies, and other essential items to support the Suffolk Humane Society. Their generous donations helped provide care and comfort to animals in need while also supporting the mission of the Humane Society to promote animal welfare throughout Suffolk. And we know that community service does play an important role in shaping responsible and empathetic citizens. Through this service, these students were not only able to foster meaningful connections but also gain a deeper understanding of the needs within our own Suffolk community. We are so proud of the impact that they are making academically but also to our beloved city of Suffolk. We are proud to share that the original music rescore of Nosferatu that we highlighted a few months back, which was produced by the SIPA students, the Center for Performing and Production Arts students at Lakeland High School, has received an honorable mention at the prestigious Bleeding Tree International Film Festival. This professional festival, which is held in British Columbia, Canada, celebrates dark drama and horror films around the world, making this recognition especially meaningful for our students. Their rescore stood out in a highly competitive field and will be featured during the festival's screening block coming up from May 2nd through May 4th. Audiences will experience our students' competition excerpt or trailer in a true cinematic setting, which is a beautifully restored 1930s movie theater that adds an authentic vintage atmosphere to the horror genre. So if you're into horror films, you probably know what I'm talking about. This honor is a testament to our students' creative talent in blending classic film with original, modern composition. We congratulate everyone involved in this exciting achievement, and congratulations to Mr. Rothschild, their teacher, for exposing our students to such amazing opportunities. Virginia's Teachers for Tomorrow is a CTE course that provides students with exposure to the field of education through participation in a world-class curriculum and field experiences related to the teaching profession. Ms. Amy Blythe and her students from Nansman River High School recently participated in the Educators Rising Virginia Leadership Conference. And out of the seven student attendees, three placed and two have been invited to compete at the national competition in Orlando this June. At this time, I will invite Ms. Blythe and her students to the podium to share more information about Teachers for Tomorrow and their recent accomplishments.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I am Amy Blythe, and I am the Teachers for Tomorrow teacher at Nansman River High School. And thank you, Dr. Green. I have been doing this class, this is my 16th year of teaching Teacher Cadet, so over half of my career has been devoted to this class. And when I tell you this is my why, this is my why. So I am very proud, this is my baby, and I can't tell you enough about how much I love this class. So Nansman River has been very fortunate to have this program for the last 16 years. Many of the former cadets have gone on to, into the profession of teaching, and many of them have returned to Suffolk Public Schools. In fact, one of my cadets this year is under the supervision of a former Nansman River High School cadet. So I feel like at Florence Bowser, so I feel like the whole program has kind of come full circle this year. In addition to the wonderful experience these cadets receive, we've had the opportunity to compete for the very first time at the Educators Rising Conference and competition a few months ago. Thank you to Dr. Green for helping us find that money. All seven cadets were able to attend and compete in various categories, and of course, you can see the winners that we've had. Unfortunately, this evening, only three of our cadets could attend because of other conflicts with schedules with sports, but they wanted to share a little bit about the program. Hopefully, everyone is aware of the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow program, but these students get 12 college credits. It is a dual enrollment program, so they are earning 12 college credits through Polycamp Community College by completing the program. They also learn about individual learning styles, they learn about special education, they learn pedagogy and educational theory, they get to put it into practice by completing internships. So their first internship is really more about observation and just kind of getting the feel for the classroom, but this semester, they are actually fully immersed, and they are teaching a full semester with their local elementary schools. Shout-out to Nansman Parkway Elementary and Florence Bowser for hosting all of our cadets this year, as well as they are in the process of completing a semester-long research project to earn three more credits for that. So tonight, I have with me Ira Shanaba, Cicely Wilson, and Mackenzie Nguyen, and they wanted to share some of their highlights with you.
Hi, my name is Ira Shanaba. I'm a junior at Nansman River High School, and something I've learned about teaching is that it requires collaboration. Even though we're only a small class of seven girls, through this program, we've been able to do service projects around our school and to lead Suffolk Public Schools to its first-ever win at the Virginia Educators Rising Conference. Personally, this program has introduced me to the joys of being an educator. This Thursday, I helped a small group of my students with some math problems they were struggling with, and I've struggled with math my whole life, but I realized that through this program, I've been able to help my students in a way that I didn't even know I was capable of helping.
Hi again, my name's Cicely Wilson. I'm a senior at Nansman River High School. I got into Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow because I want to be a future teacher, and it's just been so significant in, I guess, starting my education, journey to education, being, being an educator, excuse me. And it's just a very great resource that I think should be encouraged, especially with, like, throughout all the other high schools within Suffolk and even beyond Suffolk. I think if more students were encouraged to participate, they would learn so much about interacting with students, just building social skills, like, really learning how to grow skills they didn't know they had. Like, it's just very, very fruitful, I feel like, as a class and as a club. So I've enjoyed my time, and yeah, I'm just very proud to have been a member of Educators Rising and a student in this course.
Hi, my name's Mackenzie Nguyen. I'm also a senior at Nansman River High School, and to tell the board a little bit about myself, my number-one dream career when I was in elementary school was to be a teacher. I used to make multiplication tables for my stuffed animals to fill out and would be disappointed when they didn't fill it out. That was a zero. So of course, as I grew up, you know, that feeling of wanting to help my community and obviously, children and kids stuck with me, but the teaching, passion for teaching, not so much. So when I entered high school, I was set on the pre-med path. I was like, I'm gonna be a doctor, and there's nothing that no one can do about it. But I decided to take the Virginia's Teacher for Tomorrow course because I aim to be a child psychiatrist, and there's a whole unit about psychology, and I thought that was amazing. Also, I really like Ms. Blythe. So as I entered the course, I realized that teaching is so much more than how I thought it was. I recognize that a lot of the people on the board are teachers, and I'm sure that you're also frustrated with the, with a lot of myths and stigmas around teaching and how people just chalk it up to a moneyless, soulless job, and it's nothing like that. I think that being a Teachers for Tomorrow has absolutely changed my perspective on teaching, and though I am not committed to college for education, I can definitely say that Teachers for Tomorrow is such a vital program to Suffolk Public Schools, and I definitely would encourage high schoolers and middle schoolers, really any student, even if you're not solely interested in education, to pursue this course, and I think it's so important to Suffolk and the, I guess, the way that Suffolk can still continue. Though my fellow student is not here, she did write a small excerpt for us to share at the meeting.
My name is Alana Cody, I'm 17, and I'm here to talk about how Teachers for Tomorrow helped me figure out exactly what I want to do with my future. This class isn't just about learning how to teach, it's about experiencing it. From working on service projects to creating full-scale lesson plans to the preschool project, which was definitely no small task, I've learned what it really takes to be a teacher. And let me tell you, it's not just standing in front of a classroom with a whiteboard, it's planning, adapting, connecting, and putting in the work. One of the most eye-opening parts was seeing how important the teacher-to-student connection is. Though my kindergarten internship and everything we've done in class, I've seen how much students rely on their teachers, not just for learning, but for support, encouragement, and stability. That's what made me really think about the teacher I want to be, someone who shows up, who's prepared, and who creates a space where their students feel seen. Ms. Blythe modeled that perfectly. Her classroom is a space where students can be themselves, and she made sure that we understood how much that matters in education. That environment motivated me to take everything I've learned and apply it to something creative, my interactive bulletin board project. I ended up placing second in my category, and now I'm getting ready to go to Nationals in Orlando, Florida. So yes, this class is a lot of work, but for every project, every moment, made me more confident in my decision to become a teacher. I now know what kind of educator I want to be, and I'm excited to keep learning and growing. Thank you for supporting programs like this, they really do make a difference.
And these are just some of their works. The book, the big book, was the K3 children's literature that won second place. So we do a unit on self-esteem, we actually call it pot, and you fill someone's pot with love, and that when they have a positive self-esteem, it opens up a lot of doors to learning. And their culminating project is to write a children's story with a self-esteem storyline. So that was one of our in-class projects that we took with us to the state competition, and Erica won second place with that one. Another one we had done, we didn't do it initially in Spanish, but one of the categories is we can translate it to Spanish, and Natalia Sanin took her story from the self-esteem unit, redid it in Spanish, and she placed third in K3 Spanish children's literature. And we also do barrier books, because you don't have to have a disability to still have a block when it comes to learning. So our children learn about poverty, they learn about domestic violence and the impact abuse may have, any kind of food insecurity, anything that could possibly bring to the classroom that could impact their learning. So this is one called Rosie's Diary that they actually write about someone dealing with abuse at home and how it's impacting the classroom, and then Alana's interactive bulletin board that she won for elementary education. So thank you all for listening to our story, but again, this is, this is really one of the best programs I think Suffolk has to offer, and I really hope that we continue to see it grow.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Blythe. So before our three great students go anywhere, Ms. Howell and I are going to come down, because we have something for you. But I do want to share with the board and our school community and everyone watching at home, every year, Ms. Blythe invites central office staff as well as teachers at Nansman River to come in and be the first assessors for their capstone projects. And that actually was part of the reason when we kind of came up with the brainstorm to provide letters of intent and guaranteed contracts, and then last year, signing bonuses that we're going to do again this year for these students once they return. And it's because of the excellent work that Ms. Blythe and Dr. Green, the entire team at Nansman River High School does. It's also really interesting, because this year was a pivot. This is the first year that we actually transitioned over to Educators Rising, and part of that was because of the Educators Rising Conference that these three students just attended. And our partnership with Phi Delta Kappa in order to be able to make that happen, because we kind of felt, Ms. Blythe kind of also gave us some feedback, that it was time to reinvent some things based on the needs of the classrooms today. So with that being said, Ms. Howell and I are going to come down, because we have just some gifts of appreciation for these three great students, and I can't wait to see you all at graduation, for those of you who are graduating, I know one of you's a junior, but also hopefully when you come back to four to five years and work for S P S. Thank you for all you do.[1701.58] Thank you for all you do.
As we mentioned previously, this year, we introduced the SPS Star Achiever Recognition, which is given to an employee who promotes a positive or productive atmosphere and demonstrates leadership throughout our school division. Building and department leads received a letter and award pen to present to their Star Achiever recipients for the third quarter. And this quarter, we had 46 recipients. And so we are so proud of what each and every person does and brings to our school division and to help promote the success of our students. So these individuals will be recognized within their departments by their building or department Local businesses have the power to shape community attitudes and public schools along with the VSB A Honor Roll is a way for our school division to recognize local businesses for their support and to say thank you for their contributions to the opportunities and experiences that they provide for our students. Tonight, we recognize three local businesses in our community that have supported our school division, particularly in our Career and Technical Education Program. They've supported us in more ways than some and we thank them for their shared commitment to student achievement. Those businesses are Amoda's Industries, Star Motors, and Barton Ford Suffolk. Will the representatives here tonight from each group please join me at the podium? Thank you so much, Mr. Graham. And so we just want to present to you with a certificate of appreciation from the Virginia School Board Association, as well as a little gift and token from Suffolk Public Schools to say thank you for all that you do for our students.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Board members.
Thank you, Ms. Dickens. And I love to see that we have 46 of our third-quarter Star Achievers and all the recognition that is so well-deserving of our staff. On the calendar of special events, as you know, all I know, we actually have two meetings this month with some of these things that we have covered, but last week, when we went on spring break, was the end of National Assistant Principals Week. Thank you to all of our staff that dressed in purple on Purple Up Day for Military Children Recognition on April 15th. This is National Administrative Professionals Week. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and all of our administrative professionals that do so many great things for us. It was also our National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day yesterday. Next week, ladies and gentlemen, is National Youth Violence Prevention Week, April 28th through May 2nd. The month of May is National Youth Violence, Physical Fitness and Sports, Asian Pacific American Heritage, Jewish American Heritage, and Mental Health Awareness Day. Want to remind everybody, on May 1st, please wear green. On May 1st, please wear green for Mental Health Awareness Day. That also happens to be National School Principals Day as well, so all of our principals will be dressed in green. May 5th to the 9th is National Physical Education and Sports Week, National School Nurse Day. Thank you to Ms. Williford and all of our school nurses in advance, it's May 7th. We will be back here for our next school board meeting on May 8th. That is also the date of our Kings Fork Honor Graduate Recognition. I do want to take the time to thank our speakers tonight. This is a very challenging situation and I know the board will support me in some of the things that I'm about to say. First of all, is always going to be the goal, purpose, and mission to make sure that we support all students in Suffolk Public Schools. That was one of the things that we had Mr. Waller, our great school board attorney, check because of our M-to-M program. As we know, the forms that were, that came out were really based on if any decisions were gonna be based on race. Appreciate the speakers also mentioning the financial impact because the financial impact is the piece that all school divisions have basically been coping with since the Dear College Letter was released on February 14th, all the way up to when mandates came out on 8/3 and dates were choosing, were changing, et cetera. This is very, very hard for me because the equity policy that will be discussed tonight is actually the first policy that I helped Mr. Waller write when I started this position. And we know it was different times then, that policy passed with a 7-0 vote. But one of the things that we shared with our leadership team this morning is we are still going to continue to do everything possible to make sure that our students are successful. Because in the end, that's what it's really all about, giving our kids what they need to be successful, not tying into any political ideology or anything of that nature, just making sure that our kids have what they need and our staff has the support that is required. And because we know that, and the financial impact was definitely great, but we've always found ways to do what is necessary to make Suffolk an outstanding school division. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm gonna go ahead and conclude this report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we are moving down to new business. Item number one, fiscal year and 2025 priorities for school board to rank and approve. This was an initiative or suggestion Vice Chair McGee brought to us. We know that every year, there are needs that haven't been met and positions that haven't been filled, and so this discussion stems from that. And what I would just like to call, it's an info-only item for the evening, I would just like to call board members' attention to it. You should have this form at your seat. I'm asking you to take some time over the next couple of weeks and work on rank ordering what you deem to be the priorities if we have funding left over to spend. And I'm gonna ask you to submit your list to Ms. Gardner by 5:00 PM on Wednesday, May 7th, so that she and Mrs. Johnson can work together efficiently to provide the completed list to us for the May 8th meeting that we can then take action on. So if you just jot down a little note, fill this out, get it to Ms. Gardner and Ms. Johnson by May 7th, by end of business at 5:00 PM. Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do want to also bring to the board's attention and thank you, Ms. Howell, for providing that update and that timeline. Ms. Forzeman and I have highlighted items in red on this priority sheet based on staff recommendations for mainly infrastructure needs. This is a part of the conversation that we had had when this topic came up, I think it was about six weeks ago. One of the main items is something that we're gonna actually talk about a little bit tonight as you all can see. If the governor signs the budget, as we have stated previously, when the state gives us funds for budget, for bonuses for staff, they don't give us the entire amount. So that large amount that you see on there, that's an example, anything with an asterisk in red, the fund in our proportion of the state bonus would be approximately $723,000. We also know that we have some serious work that needs to be done at Oakland Elementary School with the courtyard there, main construction project going on, pre-funding John F. Kennedy Middle School. As we all know, when we have construction projects, those construction projects do not cover fixture, furniture, and equipment. It only covers design work and the construction project itself. So the school division is responsible for purchasing FF and E, as we call it, for fixtures, furniture, and equipment. We briefly did talk with the board about starting some of the painting that is really needed at Kings Fork High School to replace desks, to replace equipment, and you can see the last highlighted item that we have in red. We still have sinkholes that need to be repaired. Remember, our choice has always been to address those sinkholes that are in main traffic. Any sinkholes that we have that are due can create some additional safety issues. So we have sinkholes at eight different schools that is actually above the $1 million in funding in the adopted budget. That is a list as of March 26th. We're bracing ourselves now because we are in the spring season. And during the spring season, anytime that we have multiple days of rain, in many cases in the past, we've had some sinkhole issues. So to Ms. Howell's point, please, if you have questions, please feel free to email me, I'll definitely give you back additional information. We are going to compile your list by, on, starting on May 7th at 5:00 PM, and we will share what you all say is the top priorities. And remember, this is only based on if there is available funds left. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Moving on down, item number two, under new business, the appropriation of additional state funding for fiscal year 2425 staff bonuses, just for clarity before I ask for a motion. Is this the same thing that's listed at the top of our priority list?
This is to supplement that bonus list. If the board remembers, we actually brought this to you as an info item for the memo that had to go to city council. City council had to approve this, which occurred, as you see in the resolution at their last city council meeting. So because there's a change in our total amount for the budget being increased, this is the reason why we have to have an action item. However, once again, this doesn't cover the entire bonus, which is the reason why we're saying that we would need to add additional funds to it with year-end funds.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of additional state funding for fiscal year 2425 staff bonuses. Okay, the motion has been made to approve by Board Member Jenkins. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Board Member Fields. Is there any discussion? Okay, Board Member Brittingham.
I am wondering if it's at all possible, looking at this $1,000 bonus for full-time and $500 bonus for part-time, can we, as a division, cover the federal taxes portion of this so that they get more of a bonus than $616 and $308? Is that a possibility?
I'm gonna call to the podium our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Wendy Forzeman. And as Wendy is making her way there, this is something that we have worked on in the past, Dr. Brittingham, when we actually had ESSER funding. The difference was that we had that additional grant money that can cover that tax amount. In order for the board to be able to do that, that top line that you see, that red asterisk of $723, $500 would increase significantly. So Ms. Forzeman, I'll turn it over to you to provide more context.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, excuse me. The federal taxes, if you take that $250,000 and you multiply by 2,300 people, that's what it would cost you to add that to it. It is significantly higher than the $723,000 that's in your, on your list and in your letter. So please just be aware that if you do that, then when we did the $1,000 bonus before and they actually received $1,000, everyone actually received that, it cost us $1,548 a person to provide that. So it is significantly higher to provide the bonus as a whole and take care of the taxes. And that would pretty much wipe most of your list out that you would have to prioritize.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick.
I understand the financial constraints of giving a bonus, but can we go back to the table and see what else we can do to make it more so than the amount that the teachers would receive? I would also ask that the superintendent and his staff look at the possibility of waiving the expenditure for our teachers and staff lunches if there are any current expenses that we are incurring now because our teachers are going above and beyond. And I know this may, some may say it's different, but it's still dealing with the bonus for staff. If we can't do the financial piece, can we look at in our next school year, our '25, '26 school year, to have no expenses for our staff to eat at school? That's something that you don't have to answer now. You can look at it, see about the financial feasibility and, you know, just come back, but see what else we can do. Because $600 and something odd dollars, while other districts are doing way more, I understand the funding looked different, is disheartening to teachers, especially at this time of the year when we are in testing mode and, you know, spring break is over and you're here until the end of the school year with no other dates out. So just some type of incentive that we could possibly give to increase this amount.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, so twofold. The board does have the option to increase this amount, but if we, does decide to increase this amount to kind of reiterate what Ms. Forzeman said, then you're going to limit any additional funds that you will use for any of the items that potentially are on your priority or the list. The allocation for this must be done by June 30th because it has to be for this fiscal year. It's gonna be our intention to kind of work this into a retention bonus. That is something that's been very successful with SPS in the past. Ms. Forzeman, I'm gonna give you a chance to add to the second part of Mr. Riddick's suggestion because we always want to try to find ways to assist our staff. I do believe that, Mr. Riddick, if we were to waive the meal payment part for staff, I think that violates our CEP and free lunch and free breakfast program. I think there's some other challenges with that. So Ms. Forzeman, you want to give Mr. Riddick some more details?
Certainly. The challenge would mostly be the fact that the operating fund would need to transfer money to the Food and Nutritional Services Fund because we would not receive funding from the USDA to cover those items. It'd be very difficult to figure out exactly how many people would take advantage of that and what kind of money we're looking at upfront. And if you plan for everyone every day, you could be close to a million dollars by the time you get to the year end because you're talking about lots of days of lunches. So 181 days of lunches times the number of teachers. And again, not everybody would take advantage of it, it'd be very hard to estimate it. Now, we have done some other things, just to give the board some ideas, last, I think it's been two years now, Dr. Gordon, that we have allowed teachers to carry an additional personal day rather than moving it into sick leave like we had in the past. So now teachers are allowed to carry four personal days over instead of three. And then this year, our wellness program for the over 400 people that have now qualified, they'll be receiving either a $250 or a $500 rebate on their health insurance costs that were deducted from their paychecks this year. So we had that going all year through our wellness program, and so we have well over 400 people that have qualified for that as well. So there are other creative ways we've tried to put money back in our folks' pockets. So, you know, anything, we're open to any suggestions, be happy to try to cost things out for you. But the biggest thing would be, we would have to move, physically move money from one fund to the other and this board would have to approve it as well as the USDA.
So, Madam Chair, so basically, it's just a transfer that all has to be done.
And approved by, yes, not just by us, but by the USDA.
Approved by the USDA. Madam Chair, I'd like to also request that the superintendent, you know, look and see what other incentives we can do as a board to help us retain staff because a lot of people think it's all about the money. And money is not always the barrier for teachers. There are many other things that a lot of teachers would welcome as far as appreciation tokens in addition to money. Yes, money is something that we all like to have, but there are other ways we could do it. And I think if we began to have those conversations now or institute that survey and ask how many would be interested in doing that, we would have some tangible data to go from because the money adds up when you buy lunch every day and breakfast every day and teachers in their day-to-day life. But thank you, Madam Chair, that's all.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to request that we ask the superintendent to do a workup for us and what it would look like if we could absorb some more of that federal cost and be able to give teachers more of a bonus rather than what we're offering right now.
Okay, so specifically by some more of, what are you asking?
You know, maybe if we can't do the whole 250, you know, what would it look like if maybe half of that could go back towards their bonus amount?
Okay. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I think we have to, and Ms. Forzeman, you can chime in here, but just to give a roundabout number, if we were to give, if we had 2,300 full-time So, Madam Chair, so basically, it's just a transfer that all has to be done?
And approved by, yes, not just by us, but by the USDA.
Approved by USDA. Madam Chair, I'd like to also request that superintendent, you know, look and see what other incentives we can do as a board to help us retain staff because a lot of people think it's all about the money. And money is not always the barrier for teachers. There are many other things that a lot of teachers would welcome as far as appreciation tokens in addition to money. Yes, money is something that we all like to have, but there are other ways we could do. And I think if we began to have those conversations now or institute that survey and ask how many would be interested in doing that, we would have some tangible data to go from because the money adds up when you're buying lunch every day and breakfast every day and teachers in their day-to-day life. But thank you, Madam Chair, that's all.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I would like to request that we ask the superintendent to do a workup for us and what it would look like if we could absorb some more of that federal cost and be able to give teachers more of a bonus rather than what we're offering right now.
Okay, so specifically by some more of, what are you asking?
You know, maybe if we can't do the whole 250, you know, what would it look like if maybe half of that could go back towards their bonus amount?
Okay. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I think we have to, and Ms. Forzeman, you can chime in here, but just to give a roundabout number, if we were to give, if we had 2,300 full-time employees and we don't, because I know that's a less amount than that because we do have a few part-time left, we're talking about $1.15 million. Now, the federal taxes and the state taxes, we also have to be careful because, as Ms. Forzeman said, that additional, I believe it was $548, $1,548 is what we gave. And that's kind of how I came up with that figure, Dr. Brittingham. So it's not really about us finding a way to work it up. It's just know that if this is something that you all want to do, then we would have to add to your priority list approximately $1.15 million for that bonus, that bonus first asterisk that you see on there to be able to do that, bringing that total to right around $1.875 million. So that can be a choice that the board can let us know when we have our next meeting on May 8th, if you all want to do that. The second part is, I do want to also remind the board that we also need decisions to be made because the budget, finance, payroll department, as well as human resources department, is going to need some time to be able to put this part of it together. We're expecting that the governor will sign his budget by May 2nd, and then that kind of activates things since the city council has already told us how much they're going to appropriate to us. But we always try to have everything kind of signed, sealed, and delivered right around Memorial Day weekend. So we can bring that exact amount back, Dr. Brittingham, at the next meeting. But Madam Chair, we would have to have a decision at that meeting to be able to allow staff time to do what's necessary, not only for traditional payroll, but for the bonus amount as well.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for clarity. If you're going to bring another number back to us and we would have to make it an action item, May 8th, are we still in need of voting on what the motion is on the floor tonight? Or would we just need to, we need to vote on that no matter what?
Yes, ma'am. That, the piece that we're asking you to vote on tonight is the amount that the city appropriated to us that's coming to us from the state. That's the first round. So basically, the state gave us the money. They're going to give it to us by June 1st, like physically send us the money by June 1st for us to pay it by June 30th. But the city had to appropriate it before this board can approve our budget being increased. So we would ask for you to do this portion tonight so that we have at least this portion in the budget. And I'm going to have to work up the numbers, what goes to each salary line based on this. And then we can give you within, by Tuesday, I'm sure I can have, Dr. Gordon, the information on a tier, like we could try 150, 250, and then 250 and see what the additional amounts would be. And at least get you that information so that you can be thinking about it.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question for clarity for Mr. Riddick. When you said you would like Dr. Gordon to look into other incentives for staff, would you be speaking to the '25, '26 school year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Is there any further discussion about the motion on the floor to approve the appropriation of the state funding for this year? Okay, with no further discussion, we're ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slingloff?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Number three on our new business is the item tabled from our April 10th meeting that Mr. Riddick suggested be added last meeting. And so I'll just yield the floor to him to briefly remind everybody what this topic was about and what his intended motion was.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So basically, if we go back to 2023, there was a process implemented to allow our students to come out from our fine arts programs, to come out and pretty much showcase their skills at our school board meeting. We got to see a real-time return on investment of what we're putting into Suffolk Public Schools. And that practice continued for two years. And this year, there were some changes made. I personally would like to see us return to seeing a return on our investments from our students, not just only at graduation time, but throughout the year. When you see, and I'm certain that tonight, based off of what we heard, it weighed into the impact of us voting for what we just voted for. But when you get to see the students showcase what they are learning within the school system, it is a constant reminder of the why. Also, it is also a marketing strategy to show future students that, hey, this is what SPS have to offer. So I'm asking the board to bring the main thing of why we ran, why we do what we do, back into our meetings. And that's allowing our students to have at least 10 minutes to show us a return on our investment. Today, I did time clock a lot of things that we discussed at our meeting, and some reports went over 20 minutes. We're not asking for 20 minutes. I'm not asking for 30 minutes. I'm not asking for an hour. But I'm asking that we allot our students the opportunity, at least 10 minutes of a lengthy agenda, to showcase their skills and give us a presentation pretty much of their return on their investment. And we could be flexible with the instructors because we meet twice a month. So if they're not available the first, I meant the second Tuesday, and they're available the fourth Tuesday, they will have ample time, just as staff did for two consecutive years. They coordinated the schedule. No staff member complained to me about it, and I'm visible and approachable. I would like to see us get back to it. And that's where we were. I know a couple of board members were in agreement with that as well.
Okay, with that being said, is there any discussion about that? Okay, there being none, is there a motion?
Yes. I move that the Suffolk City School Board place an affixed part of its agenda to provide opportunity for students to present and showcase their abilities at our school board meeting while providing flexibility to staff.
Okay. Before I call for a second, do you have that written down that you could share with Mrs. Johnson?
I don't.
Okay. I'm going to give her a second to catch up, and then she can tell us what we need filled in.
And I do want to include that it does not have to be every meeting because we know there's 24 meetings if we have two meetings a month. But at least once a month, give our students an opportunity to showcase and give us, along with the public and the constituents, an opportunity to see a return on investment.
Okay, so can I ask if this statement is sufficient? And then, like, the details obviously are worked out month-to-month with staff. Suffolk City School Board, you move to allow Suffolk City School Board to allow students to showcase their learning through performance at a monthly meeting?
Yes, that's sufficient.
Okay. You what? You want to read it back to me? Okay.
To allow students to showcase their learning at a monthly meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Is that correct, Mr. Riddick? That's what I read.
Can you read the whole motion? Because I don't know exactly what you got.
Ms. Howell, were we condensing the motion? Or did you want to add that to what Mr. Riddick?
Mr. Riddick, do we want to condense the motion into what I read? Or did you, so what I have is, you move that Suffolk City School Board allow students to showcase learning at performances at a monthly meeting. And I'm asking, is that sufficient? Or do you want to go back to your original, the longer one?
As I fore stated, what you stated is sufficient.
Okay. So Ms. Johnson, one more time. Suffolk City School Board, allow students to showcase learning performances, learning, I'm sorry, learning at performances at a monthly meeting? Okay. So with that motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mr. Riddick and seconded by Mrs. Fields. Is there any further discussion? There being none, we're ready to vote.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. First off, is there ever a situation where there is an opportunity for more than just one, one meeting, one, one performance or one thing that they can showcase?
If I can speak to that, and then I'll allow Mr. Riddick to add in. As a reminder, these are business meetings. So in the past, we've kept it to one group per month. There are opportunities, obviously, throughout the year where these students are also performing throughout the area, throughout Suffolk, throughout the region, and at their own schools. But with this being primarily a business meeting, it's been kept to one choral or band or strings group per meeting.
Madam Chair.
Let me let Ms. Fields finish. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And then my other question was, we said to put it on the agenda in a certain spot. Could we just think about putting it at a spot where that's not too far down on the agenda so that students will have an opportunity to do their, present what they have early in our agenda?
Typically, that's what has been done. It's been an opening performance in the past.
But that's not what it said. It just said in a, put it in a place on the agenda.
Madam Chair, I would like to amend my motion to include that this fixed position is immediately after we have, after we have the approval of the agenda.
Okay. So Suffolk City School Board allows students to showcase learning at a performance at a monthly meeting in a fixed location following the agenda approval?
Yes.
Board Member Slingloff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I think one of the things that my colleague, Mr. Riddick state, Board Member Riddick stated was, you know, that this was with the availability of our school systems and our leaders within our Fine Arts Department. So I want to make sure that we don't restrict ourselves to the fact that some months may not be doable for our, for our staff. And it may put a burden on the departments within the schools to be able to pull together some sort of presentation. So I think that the goal would be to be able to give opportunity for our students to be showcased at our meetings, ideally once a month, but, but not as a burden to the school division and to our Fine Arts Department, particularly during seasons that may already be heavy for them. So I, the only concern I have is with putting a demand for it being absolutely once a month.
I understand. Let me just interject and say, just as with everything on the agenda, that is like the responsibility of the chair at the time, the superintendent at the time, and in most recent years, the vice chair. And so there'll be a schedule that will be developed by the end of summer that includes the input from staff. It wouldn't, it's not intended to be a burden. And if they're flat out, like this time of year with SOL prep and such, they're working on that versus practicing to perform at a board meeting. We're cognizant of that, and that will obviously be considered when the agenda is developed.
Thank you. Let me give Board Member Brittingham a chance to speak.
It's just that you stated after you spoke, you would give me an opportunity to speak to it.
Okay.
So I just wanted to.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Board Member Fields, you are correct. There were, there was a time in 2023 where we had two units perform at the same time. So I want to be clear, this is not rocket science. It's doable, and it has been done. All we have to do is provide the space and opportunity. We did it with one meeting a month. And we're not stipulating as to whether it's the first or second meeting a month. So if in the beginning of May is top-heavy, there's always the end of May that is pretty much SOL retakes. And most of our students, we can juggle around that. The schedule is not drafted by the board chair. It's drafted by Dr. Gordon, along with the Director of Fine Arts, and they pretty much fill in the blanks and we roll with it. It's just an opportunity to get a return on our investment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No problem. Board Member Brittingham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo Board Member Slingloff's concern as well, that I just want to make sure that we are giving ample amount of time for the Fine Arts Department to be able to schedule these. And yes, being cognizant of the idea that there are certain times of the year that are probably more difficult because there are other things that are being demanded of the students. So that, that is just my, my concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for input. I'll just remind you, as Dr. Gordon has pointed out to me, Mr. Riddick has pointed out, the staff will collaborate to build the schedule. They have a grasp on what their, their pacing guide looks like, their timelines, their burdens. So all of that will be considered. Any further discussion? We seem to be ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slingloff?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number four is info-action discussion regarding school bus incident reported by Wavy News 10 on March 24, 2025. At this time, I'm going to yield the floor to Vice Chair McGee as this was, I believe, his request.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to start off by just, you know, telling the board, the point of this discussion has nothing to do with the individual involved, the bus driver involved. So can we please keep this focused on the way forward and just have some open discussion on how we can do things better in the future to prevent events like this happening? I'm very thankful for all of our bus drivers at SPS. Without you guys, we couldn't do what we do with running our schools. And I want to say, you know, I understand, we are all human, mistakes happen. So again, this has nothing to do with the individual involved, but just to ensure the public that we, as a board and as a school division, are addressing the issue and that your kids are safe with SPS. And at this time, Dr. Gordon, if you could take over and just share with everyone what you and your team have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman McGee. I'm going to call to the podium our Chief of Administrative Services, Dr. Rodney Brown, who will provide an overview of the process that occurs when we have students that are arriving at bus stops and parents may or may not be there, the communication plan. Dr. Brown, feel free to also share with the board and school community some of the different things that we are looking at to purchase for the '25, '26 school year, just so they will know that we've already been working on this ever since this was brought to our attention. Dr. Brown?
Now, I think is on. All right, I get, all right. Thank you, Board members, for your concern with this incident. Before I start, I have to say, you know, out of all of the drivers we have, they get it done. You know, they get it done. Thank you, Mr. McGee, for acknowledging the fact that we do have some human errors sometimes. But our drivers, 99.9% of the time, they get it right. First, the first face, face that they, a kid sees is them. And, and they do everything they can to ensure our children are safe. It wasn't until I got on a bus to where I understood what it means to drive a bus. It is not an easy task at all. So we definitely want to acknowledge the good work that they do. This incident that took place, I'll have to say, we did have protocols. I mean, I'm not going to say things that were, you know, I know it's personal matter, but there are protocols in place. So, and there was an error. A few years ago, when we talked about this similar conversation, just to review our protocols, any child that's kindergarten pre-K must be hand-to-hand. That has always been in our policy and our process. That is not an option. Then we enhanced that by putting a tag on every kid. They got a big, bright yellow tag on their bag that identifies that this kid is a pre-K student or a kindergarten student. This tag is, then we did that because there are substitutes on the bus. The regular driver will know the kids and their parents and their age. This tag now, if there's a sub on the bus, allows the driver to understand this is a kindergartner. They must- this is a kindergartner, they must get off the bus, and they must go to an adult waiting for them at the bus. So that protocol is in place. As a result of this, we have done some additional things. Every pre-K, every kindergarten, in the front, front of the bus. We don't want them in the back. Sometimes they want to sit with siblings. You know, they got older sibling, I want to sit with my sibling. But what happens as you're driving the bus, another little kid wants to ask a question. You're trying to ask a question, you can't see the little kid get off the bus. So we want to make sure there, all our kindergartners, all our pre-Ks are in front of the bus. That way, no driver distraction at each stop. That way, they can put eyes on the kids when they're there with the parents. The other thing, we want to ensure that parents are at the stop. Drivers know their parents. Drivers, sometimes we get parents that want to wave, hey, I'm here. They're on the bus, they're on the porch, or they're somewhere near, you know? So we had to correct that. I don't, we don't want that. We want, regardless of, of who they are, every parent must be at the stop. Because again, if there's a sub on the bus, they don't understand that or don't know the parents. So we want to make sure that process is tight. We also brought in, of course, we did a memo to every driver reminding them of protocols and everything that, that we're doing. Another layer that we have added to this, what happens if a parent is not at a stop? Right? And that happens sometimes. The kid remains on the bus. That's the right thing to do. But immediately at that time, drivers will notify dispatch. I have a kid kindergarten, pre-K that's not on the bus. Dispatch then communicates with the school. Now, we all are working together to try to notify where that parent is. That driver will take that child back to the school. The parent will come to the school and pick up the child. There are times, and drivers know their route. Some, not all parents are there at the time. So they'll try to complete their route and then come back and drop the kid off. We want them to take that kid back to the school so there are no confusion. That way, the school knows, they can notify the parent, and they can, we can address it that way. Though, and, and we've had, and then we also will have a meeting with the drivers. The meeting is actually scheduled for next week. Again, just to reiterate the importance of the hand-to-hand, that again, 99% of them are doing it every single day. But we want to make sure that they understand the protocol, they understand the why behind the protocol. And then we can get feedback. What are some of the things that we need to consider as we're going through this process? Now, going to what Dr. Gordon talked about, we've actually have scheduled, we did a visit to look at a badge system, right? It's, and what I saw is absolutely amazing. So every kid will have an ID. They'll have a student ID that has a barcode on it. And they were actually, their goal would be for them to wear the ID every single day. But when they get on that bus, they scan the ID on the bus. Right then and there, it sends an alert to the parent. Your child has gotten on the bus from this address at this time. When they get off the bus, they scan right there again that this is the time, this is where they got off. The parent knows, okay, my child got off the bus at 4:30. I expect him in the house at 4:35. You know, so though, even though those are not there, they can call and they can make sure, well, you got off the bus at this time. And that way, that helps us if there's a, I don't know where my child is, where my child got, got put off. I don't have to go back, pull the video, let me identify the child. Let's see. Now, we can pull a report and just say, this is the time the child got off the bus, this is where the child got off, and then we can at least start looking for the child that way. We are in the beginning stages of looking at this. We've actually seen it in action. Chesapeake Public Schools uses this process. I went there. My supervisor for transportation went there, and Dr. Ron Lee was also there. And we're thankful for Chesapeake for hosting this. But that whole process was so amazing. It started out for a bus, and it expanded within the school so they can use that ID for multiple things.
So Madam Chair, you know, one of the things that Dr. Brown is talking about and Vice Chair McGee, because I know that you and I have had some conversations about this, and Mr. Riddick, you and I have talked about this as well. This might be another one of those items because one of the things that Dr. Brown is looking at is to quote, that there's going to be an additional cost in order for us to be able to add this to our buses as well as really presenting ID badges for all kids. Because it's something that you never know. A student who may drive right now, may not be driving tomorrow, may have to hop the bus. So that might be something that we have to bring back to you all as a later date as we're still waiting for the quote to come back that Dr. Brown is working on.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Vice Chair McGee, did you have any further feedback, input, or questions?
I just want to say, thank you, Dr. Brown. Great presentation. I always love when you speak. You're really thorough in what you've done, you know, in the, in the shadows so we as a board and the community can feel better. Dr. Gordon, thank you for allowing this. This was my intention. How can we as a board support our bus drivers? Whether it be through technology, funding, and even, you know, going forward, something I'm going to talk with other board members. I would like to, in the future, maybe, you know, have a meeting with our Bus Drivers Association just so we can foster this relationship, earn their trust, and let them know, hey, how can we support you more as a board? But again, thank you, Dr. Gordon. Thanks for taking this serious and ensuring that all of our kids are going to be safe when they're riding SPS buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair McGee. Is there anyone else that has any additional comment toward this topic? Okay. There being none, we will look to, the last item under new business was newly added this evening. And I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize. But it is the resolution to suspend one of our policies in order to be in compliance with the State and Federal Education Department's request. I'm going to allow for discussion. I would just like everybody to be respectful of each other. I realize this is a heavy topic. It has multiple meanings and perspectives to people. Thank you. So I just, I just ask that this dialogue be what we want our kids to reflect back to the world. I will say personally that I'm going to support the superintendent and what he did to safeguard our schools. And so with that, the resolution basically suspends Section 1-5.1:2 of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board and ratifying the signing of the Title VI Certification by the School Superintendent. With that, I will open the floor to, well, first, let me see if there's a motion on the floor before we have discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we, that we approve the resolution of the School Board for the City of Suffolk suspending Section 1-5 dot 1:2.
Okay. So the motion has been made by Board Member Slinglove to suspend the section I previously read and then seconded by Board Member Brittingham. Now, I will call for discussion. Is there anyone that would like to comment?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Riddick?
I'm not for this at all. I was here when we put the equity policy in place. And I don't know how many members of the public had an opportunity to read what is encompassed in this portion that is being requested to be suspended. I understand that our president has a chip on his shoulder. However, I'm not going to allow him to bully me into doing anything. I think that this equity policy, I know that this equity policy is in place to achieve a greater good for all of our students, all 14,000 plus. And if it wasn't necessary, we would have never put it into writing. And to remove it, I believe it is opening Pandora's Box because all the while, I know and trust some of our employees. The reality is, people always change positions. And we don't know what we're going to inherit going forward. And what I can have confidence is, is that if there's a policy in place, I got grounds to hold people feet to the fire and to remove those grounds that provides equitable educating of students. It's a direct issue with me. And not just with...
Thank you. I appreciate your support. If you could just, as we do with citizen speakers, just maintain the atmosphere of professionalism in the room and let Mr. Riddick finish and other board members speak.
Not just a issue along race, but there are other things that that clause addressed as well. And when we take out things such as implicit biasness and other things for undiagnosed students who have not been diagnosed and protected by SPED, you're opening Pandora's Box to leave behind students. And I am going to, in my personal capacity, write a letter to the Department of Education, to the VDOE. And I'm also going to point out the difference between A1 and AI. But I'm also going to let them know that we are not dealing with this here because this is not right. This is not right. And I think we need to be adamant that we're not going to remove from doing what's best for all of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. Anyone else?
I have something to say.
Board Member Jenkins?
Thank you. I also strongly oppose suspending the DEI Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Policy because it strikes at the very heart of what it means to care for every student and staff member in our Suffolk Public School family. I don't care if you are black, brown, white, male, female, those with disabilities and part of the transgender community. Your heart beats just like mine, and your life matters just as much as mine. We need leaders who care about the whole person. We see every child, who sees every child and every educator worthy of respect, protection, and opportunity. My passion and my responsibility is to ensure that all our students receive a world-class education and treat it fairly and feel safe being exactly who they are. This is not just policy. This is about people, and I will always stand on the side of humanity and justice. And this is not me not supporting Dr. Gordon. He's been put in a terrible position. We need funding. But I still cannot support this policy, and this is where I stand.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board Member Fields?
Mike?
I too.
It's not working?
But I too cannot support.
You got it.
I too support, not, I cannot support suspending the DEI policy. Dr. Gordon, I know that you did what you did for fiscal respons, your fiscal responsibilities to this district. And I respect that. But personally, the suspension of the DEI initiatives would just be, I think, disastrous for our schools, for us, for the students that we serve in our schools. I, I was a teacher for 25 years, and I know that there are students who are in need of the, the, the provisions that some of the DEI programs allow for. The, the transgender situation, from my perspective, and I've heard a lot from my constituents about that, that whole situation. We are the educators. We are responsible for providing public, public school education to all students, not just some students, no matter where they are or what they're, even if we disagree with their, their, whatever they're into, we are still responsible to provide them with a rich and, and equitable public education, whether, as, as much as possible. And so because of that, because of the, the funding that could be jeopardized that would impact our students with special needs, and because of the transgender, the, how it would impact the students who have transgender preferences, I would not support suspending that policy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes. I guess I have a couple. Well, one thing I want to state, you know, I, I've had people reach out to me. I think there's a lot of fear right now, especially around our SPED students or students with disabilities. And I want to take this moment to try to put trust back in to our school community, our parents, and any Suffolk resident that even though this section, this DEI portion of our policy is being suspended or being requested to be suspended, we still have nine other policies in our SPS policy book that protect against discrimination. There are nine different policies, and I'm going to read them off, not the, the entire policy, but the number. So anybody at home who wants to look this up, they can look at what protections are in place right now for our students. We have Section 1.1-3.1, 1-5.1, 1-5.3, 1-5.6, 1-5.7, 7-3.2, 8-2.1, 9-1.1, and 9-1.2. I also want to read off federal protections that we have in place right now. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Title II of the Americans with Disability Act of 1990 and the IDEA, Individual, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So I'm new to the board. Dr. Gordon, I, I heard you say this policy was created under your watch. Do we have any, besides the policy during your research with their attorney, to make sure we're in compliance? Did we have any other type of DEI programs in place right now that had a, that we had a pause as a district besides this policy?
Madam Chair? The only policy that Mr. Waller and I located was the one that is being discussed, School Board Policy, Section 1-5 dot 1:2. As I stated earlier, we have had to have conversations with our schools on what the work will look like to ensure that there is no discrimination. We have had to have conversations. Thank you to Dr. Branch and Dr. Leitner for leading the communication with our equity leads that we have in our building because everyone understands the tough situation that we have been placed in. And as of yesterday, there were 121 school divisions out of 132 that had signed this policy. Those that did not have different funding sources that Suffolk does not. One of the things I stated earlier during the Good News Report, to your point, Mr. McGee, is to ensure our school community and our public that the work is going to still continue to support our kids. It's unfortunate that we've been put into a no-win situation. Don't sign the policy, lose $9.6 million. Or as Ms. Boykin alluded to, potentially even additional federal funds for meals. Or do sign the policy and feel like you are literally turning your back on what you believe in. in. So it's a, a tough situation that, Mr. Waller, thank you so much for all of your counsel, the communication and conversations. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Fields, for your feedback on that. It's so unfortunate, as you all know from the timeline that I provided to the board, how many times this has changed due dates, how many times there's been lawsuits, now we have a temporary stay, how long will that last? And then there's also the fear. That's the main thing, Mr. McGee. I think you hit the nail on the head. There is fear of retaliation towards school divisions, and it's just terrible. There's really no other way to say it. So that's my long way of letting you know, yes, Mr. McGee, that is the only policy. There are no regulations that Mr. Waller and I located that would have to be addressed.
Thanks, Dr. Gordon. So I guess, besides having, I mean, like I said, we have nine additional policies to address discrimination that we can hold our teachers, employees accountable to if we find out there is discrimination taking place. Is that correct?
Attorney Waller, could you speak to that?
Well, clearly, there are policies in place that deals with discrimination. I think it's important to understand that diversity, equity, and inclusion is more than just discrimination. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is about providing certain benefits or opportunities for students that may need them. And some of those opportunities, some of those services, could be based on race. And so what this does is that it prevents local school divisions from offering services to students if any of those services are based on race. So it, it's not about discriminating as it is about providing additional services to students that may need them for whatever reason.
Thank you for the explanation, Attorney Waller. I really appreciate it. So how, with us signing this, are we stopping any services right now for S P S students? Is this affecting any additional resources for S P S students by us not having this policy?
Madam Chair, no, Mr. McGee, it is not affecting resources at this time. I think that's gonna probably be my caveat, that I'm gonna have to be able to answer that, really based on what Mr. Waller just said, at this time. The, the challenging part and the realistic part is, we have 30 days left of school, and out of these 30 days left of school, we are, we got six days before we start testing again. So that's our focus. One of the things that I'm comfortable sharing about our equity work is the studying of the data, which will continue, to make sure that we don't have disproportionalsities. However, the supports that we're putting in place, that's what Mr. Waller is referring to. And that's the area that, if this moves forward, we will spend a large amount of our time in the summer making those adjustments. Now, if this stay, this temporary block occurs, then we will come back to the board sometime this summer with additional information, more communication, because information came out today from the National Superintendent Association, based on the stay, basically just reiterated the same official opinion, the 82 pages that Mr. Waller shared with the board today. But now it's a waiting game. I mean, it is literally a waiting game to see what the impact will be, and then, and it's so hard, Mr. McGee, and I don't mean to be long-winded about this, but it's so hard, because all of this is happening while we have a new accreditation accountability system coming into effect, and our kids are gonna need support, because there's always an implementation dip every time that occurs. So this summer, as a part of the discussion, I am comfortable sharing with you and the board that we're gonna have to kinda have some updates to you all if this continues, on how we're still gonna be able to do the work.
So I, I just wanna make it clear for me, the board, and the public, right now, by, if we, if we suspend the policy, no student will be affected via funding or any resources or programs right now, just by suspending this policy, correct?
I honestly can't answer that, you know? I mean, I think for right now, Mr. McGee, for the remainder of the school year, I will lean more towards, yes, you're correct. But we don't know, because a lot of the things that we will have to do, based on what our data says, impact summer school, which then starts three weeks later. I mean, so I, I can't give you a, a clear-cut answer on that, and I apologize if I, if, if I'm not answering your question, but my honest and true answer is, we just don't know.
No, I appreciate that, that, Dr. Gordon. I guess what I'm trying to just paint a picture is, if the only D E I thing we have in place is a policy, and we have no D E I programs, then for our folks who have kids at school, really, nothing's changing right now.
The, the work of the equity leads i, is suspended. That, that, that has changed, and we, we're gonna, we're gonna suspend that until the board gives us direction otherwise.
Vice Chair McGee, if I may, I would like to see if anybody that hasn't spoken yet would like an opportunity, and then I can circle back if any of those who've previously spoken have additional comments. Is there any input or commentary from those who have not yet spoken? Okay. Is there further discussion from those who've spoken once and would like their second opportunity? Vice Chair McGee? I'm not, I can't make eye contact with you, so is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, Madam Chair, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay. So just to recap, the motion is on the floor to approve the resolution to suspend Policy 1-5.1 colon 2, and we have concluded discussion, so at this time, we are ready to vote. Board member Dr. Riddick?
Yes.
Board member Fields?
No.
Board member Jenkins?
No.
Board member Riddick?
No.
Board member Slinglove?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Board chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. As you may recall, we already had our public speakers on agenda topics earlier in the evening when we added that most recent item. So at this time, we are moving into business by board members. I ask you, as our public does, to try to limit your comments to five minutes, and be respectful of the time of the people here attending, as well as our staff who are here to support us. I will begin with Board member Riddickham to my right, move on down the line, and circle back to the left.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had an opportunity, so I had an opportunity yesterday to visit the Food and Nutritional Services Food Festival, and it was absolutely amazing. I actually did not have to eat dinner last night after I went there. There were so much wonderful options of food to try. I liked the smoothie, probably the best, but I like smoothies, so that, that wouldn't surprise anybody. I enjoyed trying some of the vendor food as well, but my favorite was coming through the one aisle where our S P S individuals had prepared some food. I tried some penne that had a fredo with a tomato sauce on it that was absolutely spectacular. But my favorite was the mac and cheese balls that they had, deep fried. Those were really delicious. And learning that most of these foods have a lot of whole grains and lower in sugar and salt, but they tasted so, so delicious. It was just amazing. So kudos to the Food and Nutritional Services for putting that on. Today, this morning, as a matter of fact, I was able to go and tour the CSEP facilities here, J F K. A shout-out to Mrs. Armstrong, who is the Director of CSEP. Just wanna thank her for taking the time and opportunity to allow me to come and, and visit the facility, and her amazing team that was there to answer all the questions that I had. I really enjoyed the conversation that I had with this team. My heartbeat is for students with special needs and being able to provide them the education and the funding and the educators necessary, and from what I saw today at CSEP, they're doing it really well. One of the things that I really appreciated that the principal there shared with me is that they don't deal in challenges, they deal in opportunities. And so it was so encouraging to be there and to walk through those halls. I got to speak with some of the students and the educators, and it was fantastic. Finally, I just wanna turn, come back around one more time to the teacher bonuses. Teachers, you so deserve these bonuses that are coming. I just want you to know that, and my heart is that you get the most you can out of the bonus that's being provided. I'm hopeful that we can, as a board, look at some of the workups that are gonna come back to us, and that maybe we can eat away at some of the federal tax there so that you actually get some more of that bonus in your paycheck. And again, Nansson River High School graduates, congratulations. Y'all are a phenomenal group of intellectuals, and I look forward to seeing what's gonna come next for you once you graduate from Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Board member Riddick?
I'm gonna make mine very short and brief. I have to cut out shortly and get to night, five of our fifth and ninth revival, so I'm gonna go ahead and be very quickly. I am deeply saddened about where we are as a country, that we even have to talk about this foolishness. It's crazy to me, and if people really want to know some of the things that we are forfeiting, I'm gonna make it very relevant for you so you can understand. Hypothetically speaking, a new teacher who is not from inner-city Suffolk, from a whole different area of the woods, graduates college, have no inclination about urban students, and accepts a job at Booker T. Washington Elementary School. In the policy that we just suspended, there's a part that talks about cultural competency. We can then not do that because that can be viewed as D E I. This is why I said no to it, because I know, I'm not trying to make it a race issue, however, I got to deal with it for what it is. I'm begging everybody to watch very closely, to go and register everybody you can, who can, to vote, 'cause elections have real consequences, and you got what you asked for. And now we got to deal with this foolishness that we should not have to deal with. We are the only city in the entire state that is under a desegregation order, and we want to talk about the relevance of a equity policy. That's why. So I'm gonna digress there. I'm not gonna stop here. I'm not gonna just be vocal at my school board meeting. I'm gonna take a ride to Washington if I have to, and I'm going to continue my dialogue with my federal representatives, as well as my state representatives, because this foolishness have to stop. Because when we talking about a ROI and return on investment, and what we just did, in that policy that we just suspended, it talks about people who were disenfranchised. And traditionally, here in the city of Suffolk, there's been a disenfranchised population, and let me be politically correct, who happens to be black. The school was built inside of a bowl next to a swamp. The school was built on a landfill. The schools traditionally didn't receive the funding that was necessary to maintain upkeep. So with 19, in the 1960s, because of the disenfranchises going on here, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King had to make a pit stop here and gave the "I Have a Dream at Peanut Park" speech there. So, yes, this is going to have an immediate impact, because if a new teacher was to start tomorrow in a inner-city school, a Title I school, who does not understand the difference of "I'm bout to fry you" will write up a student for a threat when the word "fry" in the urban dictionary means "I'm bout to joke on you." That's an example, one-on-one, of cultural competency. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Board member Slinglove?
Thank you, Chair Howell. I'm cur, I'm curious, and this is a, I'm gonna diverge from my notes that I have here, but I'm curious, and I don't know if we can receive information regarding this from Attorney Waller after this meeting at some point, but I'm curious how the Virginia Department of Education is going to respond to their requirements for cultural competency training, because that is something that has been required for almost two years for our teachers and our staff. That is something that is in our evaluation processes. So if there's any chance that Attorney Waller could check into that and, and circle back around with us, because if, in fact, cultural competencies are all being removed, and it's something that is going to come out of V D O E, that's gonna impact other things as well. So I, I'm looking forward to going through this policy as a policy review committee, because I want to see what things can be redeemed or, or maintained, because remember, we're suspending the policy. The policy is not being eliminated completely. I mean, we are suspending it so that we can be in compliance, so that we can receive the monies necessary. It's, it's kind of a catch-22, as Dr. Gordon has spoken. I mean, we're, we're talking, the students could be at a loss either way. If, if services are eliminated because of it being considered as a diversity, equity, and inclusion program, then there are services that could be eliminated. But also, there are services that are gonna be eliminated for our students if we lose minimum of $9.5 million. So we're really in a spot where we need to take time as a board and collaborate and evaluate and look at this. It's gonna start with the policy review committee. So we're looking at the immediate thing right now. The immediate threat is losing money. That is a guaranteed loss of services to our students if we lose the money. The diversity, equity, and inclusion, if we look through this policy, and we can isolate as a board and collaborate to determine what things are we doing that can be repackaged, resurfaced in some way, or how can we accommodate it? And also to look at the lead of, of the Virginia Department of Education, because again, my, to my knowledge, looking on the internet, they are not suspending the cultural competencies that I can see. So if that's the case, then I would assume that cultural competencies for, for our division are not immediately threatened. So this is just my quick following up on what Mr. Riddick said, and I'll look forward to hearing back and, and examining that together as a board as well. Going on a lighter note, I, I wanted to congratulate Dr. Green and all of his teachers. We, we spoke very highly of the students and also the parents that were here tonight, but we can't forget the teachers, the staff, the custodians, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, every single person from the beginning of the day to the end of the day that touch, has a touch point with these students. They are all part of what makes our school system work and what enables these kids and sets them up for success. So I want to congratulate Dr. Green and his team from point A to point Z for all of the work that they're doing to help these kids succeed, and it truly is a testament to the investments of every person, and I believe that they all need to be recognized. I would also like to acknowledge the teachers that have reached out to the board in the last several days regarding what has been termed the unused snow days. I know that Dr. Gordon and Chair Howell has had the opportunity to speak to that, and I, I'm looking forward to May 8th coming, where we can actually address this opportunity that may be presented to give the teachers and, and the school system an extra day off around the Memorial Day weekend. But I want to thank those teachers for taking the time to reach out to us, to communicate with us. That's what we're here for as a board. We're grateful to hear from you. We're grateful to be here, to listen to your desires, and if there's any way that we can take part in that policy and in making those decisions that can benefit you all. As my fellow colleague, Mr. Riddick, said tonight, we are looking at ways to be creative to, to give you benefits and to support you as well, to try and give you opportunity to benefit from other- benefit from other resources and gifts and opportunities within the school division. So we are here for that. Please, communicate with us. If there's other things that you think of, other ways that we can benefit you, other ways that we can serve you better, we are here to hear from you. So I'd like to say thank you to the speakers who spoke tonight, giving us your opinions and your belief sets. I value that. I think everybody on this board values that. This is not an easy discussion. It's not an easy topic. We're all wrestling with it to understand exactly what it means, exactly how it's going to impact Suffolk Public Schools and our country as a whole. So thank you for taking the time to come out and speak. I really want to highlight, probably my greatest joy of the night was seeing Mrs. Blythe with the young students that came, or those beautiful young ladies that came, and I hope that's not offensive in any way to anybody, but just lovely ladies coming and sharing. It was so encouraging, and that is why we are here. Can I encourage everybody? Lay aside differences. Lay aside different ideology. That's why we're here. We're about the business of not only educating, but creating future educators so we can continue this process of holding a high standard. To see their excitement and their enthusiasm in this program and to see the work that they've done is just exhilarating. I want to thank Mrs. Blythe because she is doing and illustrating the epitome of a good educator, and it's not even so much what's taught as what's caught. So you can say many, many things, but the example and the role model that she is setting for these students is exceptional, and that came out of the mouths of her students themselves. So thank you, Mrs. Blythe, for your consistent investment in these students. I know sixteen years, you said, I believe, with Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, but that's half of your career, which is thirty years, and that's amazing. Very grateful for that. So one more thing I would like to say. When those young ladies were speaking, one of them mentioned the word collaboration. That was one of the things that she gleaned from her Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, the collaboration piece. And I want to remind the board, this is not a, this is not a battle of us infighting. This is about us sharing different viewpoints, depersonalizing our viewpoints, hearing, taking time to listen, to try and understand the perspective. Walk a mile in someone else's shoes when someone communicates a viewpoint that's maybe different than yours. If there's even one nugget that you can glean from it, that you can take, that can make us better as individuals and better as a board, then I'm asking that we do that, that we lay aside our differences, that we respect our differences and differing viewpoints, depersonalize this, and recognize that from the board to Dr. Gordon, to his chiefs and administrative staff, all the way down, we are working for one end goal. Not to demean, not to tear down, not to tear apart, but to build up, and that takes constructive effort. It's not a passive position. It's not awaiting to receive. It's about critically thinking, critically evaluating, and doing our best to add value. Each one of us has value we can add to this school system. And it starts by acknowledging that every person on this board has value to add and trying to find that and piece it together so that we can make Suffolk Public Schools a better division.
Thank you, Board Member Slinglove. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That was it. Sorry.
All right. Board Member Fields?
I'd like to say, I'm just grateful that we were able to highlight student achievement at this school board meeting. Dr. Green, Nansman River, and Mrs. Blythe, your students are making you look good. Your hard work is paying off, and it's coming through your students. So please continue to do what you're doing. Congratulations. I'd like to say something about, about my spring break. My spring break was good personally, but professionally and related, as it relates to this school board, it was just a fiasco, one thing after another. It, the whole thing, the potential for rest and relaxation was just taken away. It was seriously interrupted by a call for an emergency meeting here. One day, we're going to have an emergency meeting, and the next day, we're not going to have it. It was just mind-bogglingly disturbing. It was particularly disturbing on many levels because, first of all, we were going to have to ask the staff of Suffolk Public Schools, the staffs who put these meetings together. And it does take days to prep for these meetings and to set all this up. We were going to have to ask them to come in, forfeit part of their spring break, time away from their children, part of, time away from their families, to come in and set up an emergency meeting to deal with something that we had already dealt with before we left. That was most disturbing about it. Another thing that was disturbing about it was that we had already talked about it at our April 10th meeting. We had talked about the DEI policy. Why was an emergency meeting being called? I was thinking about, it was disturbing to think about the cost of what it would cost using the school board funding to set up these kind of meetings. That was disturbing. The, Board Member Slinglove, you just said something about collaborating. It would, it would be readily acceptable if we were collaborating, but it does not feel like this board is collaborating on anything. It feels like we come in here and you all bring things that have already been discussed, have already been predetermined, and we're having to respond to it. That's not collaborating. That is what, you're leading us around. It doesn't feel like we're working as a board. I just have to say these things. I'm sorry if it's offensive. I'm not trying to be offensive. I'm just trying to say, please stop. I'm saying, I want the public to know what is happening. By the time we get here, nobody has spoken with me. I'm not sure what direction we're going to go to. But you all seem to have a real neat little package that you come in and you present. Why am I not involved in that? I'm part of this board.
Ladies and gentlemen, just a reminder, this is a business meeting. If you could just keep your conduct professional so we can conclude for the sake of our staff. Ms. Fields, did you want to finish up?
I do want to say, on a positive note, I just, I always like to be positive. But I do want to say to my constituents, please see what is happening here. Please lend your support. Please have your input presented here at the school board meetings. For those of you who agree with what has happened, because what has happened here tonight is very disturbing. So those of you who agree with it, that's fine. I don't have a problem with you. Those of you who disagree with it, I would like to hear from you, to hear what you're thinking is about it. We just need to work as a board, as a collaborative group, and that is not happening. So my constituents who have contacted me on these issues, I appreciate you so much. Please continue to contact me. I need to hear from you. I need to know what your thinking is so that I can hopefully bring it in here. I look forward to, I'm going to just end on the positive note. I look forward to looking at more student achievement, because what those students have done, all those honor graduates, what they've done, bringing in all of that scholarship money, is amazing, and that is what the public school is all about. That's what we're here for. And I hope that we all on the board are working for that, for that end, for that goal, to bring in student achievement, not for any other reasons.
Thank you, Board Member Fields. Board Member Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, as always, I just want to thank all the staff, and whether it be the chiefs, Dr. Gordon, our attorney, our amazing finance guru who makes sure our money is straight, and our teachers, everyone, custodians, the people, the chefs in the school who prepares the meals, the ones who takes care of our grounds, everyone, the bus drivers, thank you so much. Everything that you do is a part of making SPS a success. But I also want to say, I am deeply disturbed by the direction that our leader, state leaders, have taken us. The damage is not just looming, it's already happening. The tragic truth is that we no longer have the luxury of trying to paint a picture of what our public school divisions, our state, and our world are going through. The picture has already been painted, framed, and hung in plain view. And the most chilling part is, there's still room on the wall for more, so we don't know what is going to take place. It's room for more suspended policies, more reckless decisions that will erase the very support system our children and grandchildren rely on. Project 2025 is being executed step by step, and if we don't open our eyes and act now, we will find ourselves reacting to devastation we could have prevented. We must watch and pray, but most of all, we must be proactive. My heart is heavy, and I'm deeply unsettled by the uncertainty that hangs over the future of our young people. They deserve better, and it's on us to fight for it. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Board Member Jenkins. Vice Chair McGee?
Hey, thanks, Madam Chair. Real fast, just want to say, sorry I couldn't be there in person due to my job. I was out of town. But I really want to say thank you to Mr. Littlefield for going out of your way to make this happen so I could still join my team. I know it creates a lot more work for you, but thank you so much for making this happen. Second thing, Dr. Gordon, thank you, sir, for reaching out and allowing us as a board to list our priorities. The only one thing I would ask of you is, could you rack and stack your priorities and share that with the board so we can align, you know, what we rack and stack with your vision? Outside of that, thanks to everyone, and looking forward to our next meeting. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I just want to point out one thing that Ms. Fields shared that wasn't entirely correct. We did not have this discussion about the DEI policy in its entirety at April 10th. As Dr. Gordon already explained, this has been constantly unfolding, it seems like by the day, if not twice a day. And so the conversation began for the board on April 10th, but it wasn't quite conclusive. So I just wanted to clarify that. I have plenty of thoughts, but I'm going to keep them to myself for the moment, because my gratitude to my staff is to be silent and adjourn this meeting.